Welcome, everybody, to tonight's city council agenda. We actually have a couple of public hearings that we are going to take care of first. The first one has to do with the taxi fare changes. We're proposing that we increase some of the fares on the taxicab, and we need a public hearing to do so, so I do call this a public hearing to order. In attendance, we have councilpeople Peterson, Olson, Mayo, Whitman, Hackett, Pritchatsky, Hagan, Fair, and Mayor Brian Smith and staff. We have two council members that are not here tonight. So what we'll do is, we'll just have, for the purpose part of this, we'll just have Henry explain exactly what we're doing with this.
Thanks, Mayor. Because the city receives state and federal taxi subsidies, we're required to have a public hearing whenever we do significant changes to our service, which would include, you know, operational changes, but as well as fares. So tonight's public hearing is a public hearing to take comment on proposed fare increases. We are proposing a 25 cent across-the-board fare increase, except for agency fares, which would go from $6 to $6.50 a ride or a trip. So this is really being brought forward because of the need to look at our taxi, our transit fund finances, and try to bring more revenue into the system. And this is like one piece of this, and we feel this is a reasonable approach to generate some new income. And then we're also working with the Vets Home in amending their agreement, and we'll get into that a little bit later on your action items. But that's essentially the purpose of the hearing, is to receive comment on the proposed fare increases of a quarter and for agency fares of 50 cents.
All right. Thanks, Henry. At this time, then, we would take testimony in favor of the topic of the fare increases. If we have anybody in the audience, or council members, or staff, that would like to speak in favor of this, please give your name and address for the record. Limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any discussion in favor? How about any testimony in opposition to the fare increase? Any testimony in opposition? Hearing done, I declare this. Hearing closed at 6:05 PM. We will act on this during the regular council meeting tonight. Next, the one that we've been working on for the last few months, this is the public hearing dealing with our budget, and we can just go along and say that the same people who were at the last public hearing that are at this public hearing, we're going to ask Kathy, to our finance director, to just explain how we got to the point where we're at. And I know that the budget, proposed budget, got printed in the newspaper, and it's been online, but there has been some changes just because of information that Kathy has learned since we have posted that. So Kathy, if you want to go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The proposed budget that was printed in the paper has been changed based on the updates that we did during our workshop at the last council meeting. In addition to that, we have our Expenditure Restraint Program number in, which is less than 2.5% increase on the expenditures of the general fund. And what I have done is adjusted some of the accounts within the general fund, so that our expenditures are at 2.4%. And in doing that, I added a contingency amount that is really for ERP, which is Expenditure Restraint Program, purposes only. So I'm going to just plug a number into the budget, so that we don't lose ground with this program, because if you do not raise the budget to that level, the next year, when you have to add the 1%, you will come up against that ceiling that they put on the budget. So we're going to increase the budget for expenditures to come within the 2.4%. Otherwise, what our budget is, is a decrease of .6%. So if we were, we would have to be at the $6.9 million expenditure level next year, and that could be harder to qualify, depending on what the inflation, I'm sorry, the CPI of September and our net new construction is what the two factors that make up that percentage figure for the state. So my recommendation will be that we increase the budget with this report-only contingency amount. And then we also have, with the levy limit law, we did have some carry-forward tax levy amount, and that was in the amount of $6,961, and that's from the 2015-16 tax levy. According to the state, we didn't levy the full amount that we could have, and so we have the option to carry that amount forward for that, for next year. And that is going to be staff's recommendation that will be included. The other thing that we have are the numbers from the state for our school levy credit, which has been increased by $64,680, which is like almost an 8% increase from last year. And our First Dollar Credit is going to be $73.35, which is down 23 cents. And our lottery credit is going to be $128.36, which is a decrease of $10.01. On a $100,000 assessed value home, the property owner, if they qualify for the lottery credit and First Dollar Credit, would see an increase in their total tax bill of about $34.24 for the year. And that's with the general fund budget, with the levy being as it is, what was recommended at the last meeting. So it's a good budget. I'm showing again that the net increase between the TIF increment and the city's levy on this, on this tax levy would be a 0% increase in the mill rate. So we're reducing technically our levy by 50 cents on the mill rate, and the TIF levy is approximately 50 cents on the mill rate. So there is no increase on the city's side of the tax mill rate. Any other questions? Any questions? Again, the departments have made cuts within the budget. We've made adjustments for a 1% increase for employees for salary. We've absorbed the 3% increase in the city's portion of the health insurance, and have adjusted the opt-out, and have now received five additional opt-outs than that was from last year. So we have a total of 15 employees not on our health insurance. So that is extreme savings. You're probably looking at, of those five, about $100,000 in savings for the city. So that helps, that would help our budget tremendously going forward. Otherwise, nothing else has changed since the last meeting.
Hearing that, we, at this time, would take testimony in favor of the proposed budget and the tax levy for 2018.
Here.
If you would like to give testimony in favor, please step up to the podium, give your name
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
and address for the record, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Next up is the consent agenda. These are items that we act on with one motion and vote on those, unless there's a council Any discussion in favor of the budget? member or staff that would like to see any of these individual items moved to the regular Any testimony in opposition to the budget? agenda, where we would discuss and then vote on those individually. Again, if you would like to, please step up to the podium, give your name and address Anybody that would like to see items moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? for the record, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any testimony in opposition?
Motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Hearing done, seeing done, I declare this hearing closed at 6:12 PM. Motion by Hackett.
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. We're going to start the council meeting, and just, right at 6:15, we'll start the council meeting, so. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, we'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Regular agenda. Sandy, you got some handout?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Under number nine, new business letter C, resolution number 1393, a resolution designating Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state appropriations and levying a tax for the 2018 budget of the city of Opaaca was distributed. statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. And that's all.
And would you also take roles, Sandy? All right.
Brian Smith.
Anything else, council, that you would like to see adjusted? Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Motion approved.
Alan Keeland.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Second.
Motion by Olson.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Second by Fair, that we approve the regular agenda with that one addition or change.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Announcements, we have a presentation from Tracy Berent, who's the director of the Opaaca Historical Society. Tracy, if you want to just step up?
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, city council members. I came tonight to, first of all, say thank you very much. Each year, the city allocates money to the Opaaca Historical Society, and we are very grateful for these funds, and are, because of those funds, have been able to continue our mission of preserving and sharing the history of Opaaca and the Chain of Lakes. We believe we are an asset to the community, and we are integral piece in preserving that history in Opaaca and the Chain of Lakes. In 2017, these funds have directly enabled us to accomplish a number of things, and I wanted to tell you about that tonight. We offer monthly free programs at the Opaaca Historical Society, both at the Holly History and Genealogy Center, which is on Main Street, in the former Carnegie Library, and also at our historic Opaaca Depot on Oak Street. So far, in 2017, we've had 932 people attend our 20 special or monthly programs, and we've had topics about local history, regional history, we've had authors. Our next program is with Wisconsin author Jerry App, so we've gotten also state recognition from our programs as well. Every time we have a program, we ask for donations, too, so that also helps with our mission of preserving Opaaca history. We also have continued our outreach in the community through participation in local organizations and committees, and I currently serve on the Downtown Advisory Committee. I am active with the local arts and cultural organizations here in Opaaca. I was just appointed to the City Plan Commission, and also serve on the Steering Committee for the Rise Network, which is a young professional group. So all those committees that I'm involved with, and also our board members are involved with, have enabled us to be active in our community and also further our mission in preserving Opaaca history. We also get research requests from around the country. Every week, we get about three to five research requests at the Opaaca Historical Society, and so that keeps me busy, also with a handful of volunteers to help me with those. The funds also help us to prioritize the preservation of thousands of historic objects that we have at the Historical Society, and those objects are kept both at the Holly History Center and the Depot, and then also at the historic Hutchinson House in South Park. Each year, we receive about 200 to 400 items that are donated to the Historical Society, and those range from paper objects to clothing, to really anything you can think of. And that money, we use that directly to preserve those objects and to preserve that history of Opaaca. And many of our items in our collection are over 100 years old. We also, this year, improved the pathway at Hutchinson House. If you haven't seen it out at South Park, we redid that, and it's a nice entrance to the facility there. In October alone, we had 10 rentals of our buildings, which is the Holly Center and the Depot, and this has, does not even include the six groups that meet monthly at the Holly Center. And our rentals have increased dramatically in 2017, making the Holly Center not only a program space for us, but also a community gathering space, so more and more people are aware of our facilities. We also have made strides in the last couple of years to start raising more money to continue our mission in the community, and we held our first Paint and Sip fundraiser in October, and that raised almost $300 for us. And we also received a grant from the Convention and Visitors Bureau this year for an advertising campaign, which we did see positive benefits from at our depot and our Hutchinson House with visitors this summer. This summer alone, we had 800 visitors to the depot, and that is just from Memorial Day to Labor Day, so we certainly saw an increase over there, too. So I just wanted to come tonight to tell you a little bit more about the Historical Society and all that we're doing over there, and to say thank you very much for your support and your allocation of funds every year for us. It truly makes a difference in preserving our history in Opaaca. Thank you.
Tracy, you want to mention that you just recently sent out a letter to the...
Yeah, we just sent out our annual fundraising letter. Thank you, Mayor Smith. But yeah, every year, we send out a fundraising letter to ask for donations toward projects, and that helps us to preserve the artifacts that are in our collections. It helps us to put on those monthly programs, which we always offer free, and to continue that mission of educating the public about Opaaca history and about the Chain of Lakes history. So, thank you, Brian.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or anything? Thank you very much for attending tonight. Let's move on, then. We have a proclamation. This is for Fair Housing Month in the city of Opaaca, and this is something that Brennan has prepared and that we need to do for a grant that we are receiving. And Brennan, I'll ask you to read that proclamation for us.
Sure. Yes, this is just one of the closing out actions for our planning grant that we received in 2015 for the downtown plan that was produced and prepared by RDG, so we're just trying to close out a couple of loose ends. But the proclamation is, whereas equal housing opportunity is a right guarantee to all Americans under Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Law, that the struggle against discrimination in housing continues, and whereas fair housing is not simply a racial issue, and access to affordable housing in cities and rural areas is a problem for many families, for people young and elderly, white, as well as minorities, and whereas fair housing is consistent with the principle for equality and justice for all principles upon which our nation was founded, all of us need to share in the effort to ensure fair housing is a reality for all Americans, and whereas the state of Wisconsin has recognized the principles of fair housing with the passive and expanded law, which allows the state to assure its citizens a broader opportunity, and fair housing in the city of Opaaca has enacted a fair housing ordinance in an effort to promote those same principles, and whereas each year since the enactment of the National Fair Housing Law, the federal government designates a month as Fair Housing Month, and I am pleased to join in such designation. And now, therefore, I, Brian Smith, by virtue of the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Opaaca, do proclaim the month of December as Fair Housing Month in the city of Opaaca, and I acknowledge all positive efforts of our lenders, realtors, landlords, and other professionals, and urge every citizen of this city to practice the letter and spirit of the fair housing law, even as we recognize all noble efforts toward this realization of this human dream and fulfillment of this basic need.
Thank you, Brennan. Appreciate that. Let's move on, then. I did sign that as you were reading, so we're all set. Next is public input. This is for any individual that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item. If there's any council member, or people in the audience, or staff that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, again, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Seeing none, we'll move on, then, to the department head reports, and we'll start with Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. My report is on page eight, and this is my busy time of year in our department. We've gotten the tax roll certification and transferred the outstanding amounts to the county to be included on this year's tax roll. We have the auditors scheduled earlier this year. They will be coming in December 18th for preliminary work, and they will be doing their final work in February. We're hoping to get all the books closed for this year in March next year, so that we can present everything to the council in May. The next project, once the budget is passed, is to get a comprehensive budget book published for the council and for the public, and providing some additional information regarding each of the departments and where their tax, the public's tax dollars are being spent. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. As always, any questions of these department heads as they're talking, go ahead and ask. Peg, let's hear about the library.
Thanks. The library is moving right along. We did send out a fundraising letter for the foundation this past week, and so you may have received that in the mail. We are looking at donations for materials. We did see some cuts to materials this year in order to make the budget work. While the city tax remained level, the county tax did not. It went down, so we are looking for some donations to make up that difference. We have a lot of exciting things happening right now. We just opened an exhibit, and it's a taxidermy exhibit, and it's being phrased, "The Wild Wonderland." And so what it looks like is you're walking through the woods, and you see all of these wonderful animals. So I do invite you, it's pretty amazing. We have a polar bear, we have wolves, we have beavers, we have birds, so take a look. I think you'll find it pretty interesting. In addition to that, we have some other things that are coming up. We do have some closed hours. We're going to be closed Thursday and Friday, but open Saturday, and there is a workshop in the exhibit room, or along with the exhibit, to make some holiday ornaments, and that's open to anyone who wants to come with their family, with their kids and families. We also have "It's a Wonderful Life" going to be shown in our meeting rooms. Dr. Jag Road's going to lead that discussion, and that's on the 7th of December, so that's coming up. And on the 12th, Lunch and Learn is a very special guest this year. It's actually my story, and it's called "My View From the Back of a Harley." So if you want to come and hear my motorcycle story, it'll be on the 12th at noon. In addition to that, we have all of our regular children's programming happening, and then we have something called Hour of Code. And Sue Abrahamson is a real advocate for making sure that kids are exposed to code, have that experience at the library, and that the people in our community understand the importance of code, coding, and what's going to happen in the future as far as the needs for coding in our community and outside of our community. So there's an Hour of Code. You can participate that. The times are listed on our website, so if you want to come in and see what coding's all about, or stop in the children's department, and I'm sure she'd be happy to show you some of the equipment that we have that we teach code with. And that's about all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Peg. Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, my report's on page 55. Just want to highlight two things. Kind of a public service announcement this evening, as it's getting colder outside, we're going to start seeing some snow here soon, and we just want to remind everybody that has a sidewalk in front of their house that they do need to clear that within 24 hours after a snowfall. We are implementing a new procedure this year with our code compliance officer in the DPW. To get a quicker response, we will not be sending out letters, but we will be doing a knock on the door and the door hanger before our DPW guys do come around and clear the sidewalks, so we are going to at least attempt to try to contact people first. But we are publishing this in the newspaper, and Facebook, and social media, so we can get all this out, but we will not be sending letters out this year. And the other one is, I just invite everybody to take the survey for the downtown and for the four-way stop. We are looking to end that at about the end of November here, but please go online and fill out the survey. It takes three minutes for three questions, or stop in one of the local businesses this weekend while you're shopping on Black Friday and Small Business Saturday, and fill out the survey there.
It doesn't take three minutes, Brennan. Takes about 30 seconds, but yeah.
I was being generous with comments on it at the end, but...
Well, you're right. Yeah, that could be. All right. Henry is going to take Brennan's, or Justin's stuff, but we'll do that right at the end. So Justin's not feeling good today, so let's go to Aaron, and then we'll just do yours together with Justin's. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report is on page 33 of the packet. We did go through the performance review process recently, in the last few weeks, as did all of our city departments. Our staff had some good comments. I think there are things that go well and things that can be improved on anything, especially the first time through, but overall, it gave us an opportunity to address some things, positive and negative, and move forward and better ourselves as staff. Recently, we found out that Mr. Dorn from downtown here, who recently had his store vandalized, has decided to give the excess money that was raised for that, for those repairs, which is about $1,600, towards youth in the community. So we will work with Mr. Dorn on that, and we are very grateful, and it speaks volumes to the person that he is to want to put it back into that. So we're excited to make a difference with that donation. Beginner basketball is currently running with really good participation. We actually got up to 46 kids. I know Andrew's report says, I believe, 39. We got a few late registrations, and that's kindergarten and first graders. That is very, very good for those two grades, since we kind of divided it up. We have an intermediate program that's going to be second and third graders, and that's coming up as a separate program. We also have an Adapting to Wisconsin Winters program that's running out of our Eco Park, and we are working with Blair, who taught the last program on that. And then the last thing I want to say is Adventure Outfitters, we found out today, and personal trainer Aaron, are hosting a winter race at Swan Park in December, and all the proceeds are going to go to purchase snowshoes for winter programs at the Eco Park, so that's very nice as well. That's all I have, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Officer Helges, or Sergeant Helgeson is here tonight again for Chief Hozell. Does anybody know what Chief Hozell looks like? No, I'm just kidding. Helges, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The council or commission held its meeting in November with Chief Hozell. During the meeting, we talked about the COPS grant, and we still haven't been notified as far as if we've been onboarded to grant or not, so we're waiting on that. We have two new squads that are ordered for 2018. We're still waiting for those to come in. We're working with Alderman Chestnut on Adopt a Family for Christmas. The officers usually donate some time and money for a family that is in need. It's a good program. We also received generous donation from Piggly Wiggly for a sales donation they had in October, and Sergeant Trusuffer completed 15 years of service and was given a thank-you card for that. And so that's really all I have.
Thank you. Josh, you're up next here.
Okay, I've been spending a lot of time the past month or so doing wiring at the rec center for our new camera and key fob system, and we've got one more pole to do, and we'll have the wiring in place to move forward to the next step of that project. Hoping to have the new cameras in before Christmas, and then we'll do the key fob part in January. I've been working with Josh Peterson, the Parks Department. We've pretty much completed installing all the new cameras at the parks that we were going to put in this year to cover some more problem areas. I think two of those cameras paid off already, catching a truck doing some weird stuff out at Swan Park, so we had good time in getting those in. We had our backup in... as far as if we've been onboarded to grant or not, so we're waiting on that. We have two new squads that are ordered for 2018. We're still waiting for those to come in. We're working with Alderman Chestnut on Adopt a Family for Christmas. The officers usually donate some time and money for a family that is in need. It's a good program. We also received generous donation from Piggly Wiggly for a sales donation they had in October. And Sergeant Trussifer was, completed 15 years of service and was given a thank you card for that. And so that's really all I have.
Thank you. Josh, you're up next here.
Okay. I've been spending a lot of time the past month or so doing wiring at the rec center for our new camera and key fob system, and we've got one more pole to do, and we'll have the wiring in place to move forward to the next step of that project. Hoping to have the new cameras in before Christmas, and then we'll do the key fob part in January. I've been working with Josh Peterson, the Parks Department. We've pretty much completed installing all the new cameras at the parks that we were going to put in this year to cover some more problem areas. I think two of those cameras paid off already catching a truck doing some weird stuff out at Swan Park, so we had good time in getting those in. We had our backup internet connection installed at the police department, and that's working good. So that's a really cheap insurance policy, just in case anything ever happens in this building where, this building would be inoperable. We taped our latest episode of Wapaka Local Live last week, featuring Stanton West, and that debuts this Friday, 7 o'clock on Wapaka Radio, and then it'll be on our website and Win TV following that. I made two new hires to help out with community media on Wapaka Online. Durant Popple and Brandon are joining our staff, and Brandon's joining us through a work experience program, so he gets paid, but not by the city, but by an outside organization he's going through. So that's kind of a bonus, and both have been a good addition to the staff. They're helping with the wiring project at the rec center, and are going to be helping out with Wapaka Online as we lead into the expansion project. We were hoping to be up on the Marion Tower by now, but we're still waiting for the county to approve our lease agreement, and that's expected to happen in December, so that's been kind of pushed back a little bit, but that's kind of the first step to get us going on this. I attended the Bear Creek Town Board meeting to discuss placing a tower on the town property. They're open to that, and I'll be going back in January when they have a meeting for public comment regarding that. And then the town of Caledonia reached out to me. They weren't necessarily within our project area, but they've got interest in learning more about what we're doing, and seeing if they might fit into this somehow.
Great. Thanks Josh. Henry, double duty tonight.
Yes sir. I'm going to pinch hit for Justin. His report's on page 56, and I'll just hit the highlights. The wastewater division, they've winterized the park lift stations, and the sewer line cleaning is underway. With this nice weather, it gives us the opportunity to get the Vector truck out and hit this, continue to work on it. In the street division, the design is proceeding with the City Hall parking lot, and tied to that, there has been some sewer lines surrounding the City Hall are scheduled to be televised in early December. There's a plan as staff to come forward with some information on the Evans Street project. We're going to do that, I believe, next month to discuss kind of where we're at. The grant applications are going to be due shortly after that, and we want to get council's authorization to submit those. Under the water utility division, they're doing meter testing and repairs. You might have remembered, the Vets Home was studying some options for water to address their challenges with some of their water quality, and one of the options is for the city to potentially provide them water. They are finalizing their report, and we anticipate getting that in the next, you know, month or so. And again, we're not sure what the total outcome of that is, or what it looks like, or what their final recommendation's going to be to address their water quality needs. And then finally, in the facilities management, we did move some furniture for the PD training room to put some carpet, some new carpet in there. We assisted the library by delivering the food for finds to the food pantry. We completed the annual DNR goose report. In my area, I guess, Aaron, you took some of my thunder away, but thanks for the nice comment. We have implemented a new performance management, performance appraisal system, and we've been kind of kicking the tires with it. We had a cross-department team help put it together, and we fully expected that, you know, we would want to make some changes to it, and we're kind of in the process of debriefing and coming up with some changes. So I've been pleased with that. I think overall, it went well. There was some, some things we're going to need to address to improve it. And then finally, under my report, I did want to make a plug. You know Brennan and I, and Aaron have been working with the Chamber and the Downtown King and In-Between group to kind of promote events in the downtown, and we're going to have a tree lighting, and there's going to be some caroling downtown. Thursday, December 7th is the tree lighting, and then, and there'll be some caroling, and then Thursday, December 14th, there'll be caroling again. So please come down and enjoy that. We are working to get some Christmas trees put in the downtown, some small four to five foot trees. We've got about a dozen businesses willing to decorate them. The group is going to, our group is going to provide the trees, and then the businesses are going to decorate them. So hopefully that'll make the downtown real festive and all for the holidays. So please put those dates on your calendar. Thanks.
All right. Thanks Henry. Any questions? All right, let's move on then to unfinished business. This actually has to do with the airport and the awarding of the snow plowing contract. So I'll turn this over to Paul again.
Sure. The Airport Board met on Wednesday, last Wednesday, and the largest topic of conversation was the airport, the snow plowing contract. That begins on page 129 of your packet, with pages 135 and 136 kind of being the interesting stuff. We had four bids. ACS, Anderson Customs Services, Bellevue Farms, Digger's, Evacuation, and Paul's Concrete, who has provided our service in the past. After extensive discussion, the Airport Board agreed, decided to award the contract to Bellevue Farms, which you will see in your packet, was the low bidder. We, not only did we look at, at cost, we also looked at a variety of factors. Some of the, those who were, did, quotes, didn't own any equipment and would be leasing it. Other ones had too long of a time in which they were, would say that they would clear the airport. Mr. Long and Beth here are also in the audience, so we can, if there's any questions, we can get to them, but the, the Airport Board felt that Bellevue Farms had the best combination of, of service and cost for this, for the Does anyone have any questions, either for Beth or Mr. Long?
I would have a question. Does this include, or do we salt or sand out there for the airport, and would Mr. Long do that?
Beth, did you want to step up to the podium, or Mr. Long, either one?
Thank you. Yes, for the Airport Board, we do have the actual salt, or what's called NAC, or regular salting stuff, like you'd say on any salt, any regular asphalt or whatever. We also have a de-icer, that's a liquid de-icer. He does have all the equipment to help us not only get that into our tanks, but he, we also have the equipment to be able to spread that on the, on the grounds as the foundry needs it.
All right.
Thank you.
Dave? My question would deal with the actual operation, just curiosity more than anything. Who decides when it gets plowed? Brian come over when he decides it's necessary, or is there a limit, or do you call him and say, "We need it"?
It's a little-
Beth, do you want to step up to the podium again?
It's a little bit of three factors. It's me, it's the plowing company, which should be Brian, and it would be the foundry. So on a Friday, the foundry gives us what their schedule is, and so at that point, when it, depending on snowing or not, if we have to get out there early, late, however, we want to meet their needs first. And then between 8:00 and 5:00, if it's, you know, we'd usually decide that, say if we don't have any urgency to have the plowing done right away, we'll wait until the snow stops, and then the plowing company will come in and take care of the, the situation.
Any other questions? Do you want to make a motion?
I would move that we accept the contract from Bellevue Farms for the 2018 through 2020. Is that correct?
21.
21, of snow removal.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, and second by Hackett, that we approve of entering into an agreement with Brian Long, Bellevue Farms, for snow plowing service at the Wapaka Municipal Airport Runner Field for the years 2018 through, through 2021's. The rates listed in your packet. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have the city shared ride taxi system. We did have a public hearing earlier. We did not have anybody that had, gave testimony in favor or against, but Henry, you want to-
Oh sure.
-set us up here.
Yeah, I have Carl Schulte and Dave Lowe with Brown Cab. My memo starts on page 148. And Dave prepared the, the attachment, but I probably, because it came so far, should allow them to maybe kind of hit the overview, and then we can answer any questions. But there's really two actions I'm requesting council is to, to approve the proposed fare increases, and then secondly, authorize me to submit our operation grant for 2018, as well as our capital grant for 2018. So I don't, Dave, Carl, which, who wants to?
I got pushed.
Age before beauty, huh?
Yeah, something like that. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the opportunity to, for us to do business in the city of Wapaka. It's been a great experience for us, and we hope that the city is happy with the service, because we think we provide a high level of service to the community, and we are very pleased to be working with the people of Wapaka and the city administration, which has been outstanding to work with. And I want to throw some compliments Henry's way here. We believe that it's necessary because the state keeps cutting funding, and cutting funding, and cutting funding, and at some point, we need to keep, keep the system healthy and, and do some revenue enhancements. The fare increase is one of them. We're, we're working, reworking the contract with the Vets Home to more properly reflect their share of, of the business, which is continuing to grow as their population gets older and less, less healthy. It takes more time, and there are more people out there that need transportation. So we're working that with a goal of getting the operation of the Wapaka taxi to not need any operating subsidy. We're approaching, trying to approach that this year. We, that's a goal. We probably won't achieve it, but we're going to be a whole lot closer in 2018 than we have been in the past couple of years, because of what we're doing. And eventually, if not in 18, then hopefully in 19, we'll get that down to zero. So be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Dave, go ahead again, just for information. It's agency, I don't know what that is.
The agency fare is a fare that is paid, in most cases, by family care, the family care agency, and because they have requirements, they get paid to provide for their clientele, and transportation's part of the package. So we try to get them to pay an appropriate number that's closer to the actual cost of the ride, so that there's not any city subsidy going into the agency. And we're, we're not asking the taxpayers of Wapaka to pay twice for the, for those things. So we're trying to make sure that we cover all of the local costs on those rides.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's not so much a question as a comment. I, I work at the Veterans Home, and I can say that the members there and, and staff do appreciate the fact that there is taxi service out to the Veterans Home. And it's sometimes interesting that when, when I talk to new people, they, they seem surprised that that is, is a service that is, is there. So compliments to you as far as servicing the Veterans Home.
Thank you very much.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Again, as Henry said, we're looking for two motions. The first one is to approve the increased fares that you heard about earlier, right before the meeting started at the public hearing. That will be the first one. So do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Pritchardsky, that we approve the proposed fare increases for 2018, effective January 1st, 2018. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
And next is just to give authorization for our staff to submit a, 2018 operations and capital grant applications.
So move.
Motion by Hackett.
Second.
Second by Pritchardsky, that we authorize staff to submit 2018 operations and capital grant application to the DOT. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thank you, both of you, for attending tonight. Appreciate it. Next, this was the other public hearing. This is Resolution Number 1393. This is a resolution designating appropriations and levying a tax for the 2018 budget of the city of Wapaka. And Kathy, you got, want to just-
I'll just go over it again.
Okay.
And towards the back of the packet that I handed out is the resolution, which would be adopting the 2018 budget as presented in the attached schedule behind it, and the levy of $3,317,963, of which $1,769.71 is for the general fund, $10,000 to the transit fund, $60,000 to the airport fund, $352,554 to the library fund, and a debt service fund levy of $1,134,438. As part of the motions that I need, I need consideration to approve the use of the prior year's unused levy carry forward, in the amount of 961. That's one of the requirements the Department of Revenue is requiring us to have, to be able to use that excess levy in 2018. And then the other action would be is to adopt the resolution as presented.
Any questions on the resolution or the budget itself, council members? Kathy, let me make sure I understand this. The, are you looking for two motions, or does this resolution take care of-
No, I need a separate motion for the carry.
Okay. So the first motion was dealing with council approving that we use prior year unused-
Used levy carry forward.
Levy carry forward. And there, there actually were two years that-
Right. We can only take one year.
Okay.
So I'm saving next year for using that $6,800 that's left over from the 2016, 17.
Everybody understand that, then? We're just rolling some funds basically into this budget. We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I would so move.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Hagan, that we approve of that request. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Motion carried. Next is the resolution, which is actually our, our budget for 2018. We do do it in resolution format. Only one thing I want to touch on, and we've done this in the past, and maybe it was just last year or two. But if you remember Kathy talking about to meet the expenditure restraint program that the state has, and that's quite valuable to our city budget, we needed to make sure that we had about just over $138,000 in expenditures that we added to our budget to make sure that we are at the limit where we want to be, so that it doesn't hurt us in the future. As in the past, this is just for expenditure restraint purposes. It's not money that, it's going to sit in a contingency fund, but it's not money that's earmarked for anything. And I think it would not be any different than we did, when we did this in the past. I think it takes?
Supermajority.
A supermajority, which would be 75% of the council members, to approve using any of that money out of there. So if we were to use it, they would have to come back to council and request that. So it would have to be quite the emergency to have to use that. So we're not taxing for that. That's actually coming out of our reserves and being just put into a contingency fund. So going in one pocket and putting it in the other pocket, basically. Otherwise, I think Kathy did a great job of explaining the budget process as we see it, and the resolution. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to adopt resolution number 1393.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayo, second by Hagan, that we approve of resolution number 1393. This is a resolution designating appropriations and levying a tax for the 2018 budget for the city of Wapaka. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
We have resolution number 1394. Kathy?
Correct. My item is on page 150 of the packet. This is the authorization for borrowing amount not to exceed $150,000 from the State Trust Fund Loan Program for the 2017 capital equipment and finance of public works projects. This is going to be a two-year note. They do no, they no longer do a one-year note. So this is to cover the equipment purchases that are attached on the list for 2017, which is the $26,000 pickup truck for the cemetery, the $8,000 mower, the library carpet, the server upgrade in the city hall, the annual equip, computer replacement, the squad car, lieutenant squad car we purchased this year, the camera system upgrade for the rec center, which was from savings from the cemetery pickup truck, the floor machine for the rec center, the mower for the public works, and the taxi minivan that our share of the purchase price. So it's $150,000 that we'll be borrowing on a two-year note. And the rate is 3% from the state. So it's part, and it fits in within our budget projections.
Okay, so Kathy is recommending that we borrow the money from the State Trust Fund for $150,000 to cover the 2017 expenditure, capital expenditures that we have made. I'm assuming all of these have been purchased?
Almost.
Okay. So it's almost complete. And we are going to do this over a two-year period, pay it off in two years, basically. I'm sorry, Steve, did you? Motion by Hackett?
Second.
Second by Olson, that we approve of borrowing from the State Trust Fund $150,000 to cover the capital cost of 2017 for equipment. This is under resolution number 1394. Any discussion?
Kathy, is this a one, a single payment note?
We can make it a single payment note, and what I can do is request them to do a prepay. And it shouldn't be a, there's no penalty on these. So I'll have this paid in 19. I have to have it go at least, so it qualifies as long-term debt. I have to have it a year or more. So it'll, it'll be paid in 19. And that's the reason why I put a lot of the equipment that, on that note, instead of borrowing five years for it, because we can do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. And again, get the idea here that most of this equipment that we are purchasing is equipment that will last more than two years, but we're paying it off fairly aggressively by doing it in two years, which is really a good thing to be able to do. So any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next, we have resolution number 1395, which is also a borrow from the State Trust Fund. Kathy?
Correct. This is the five-year note for $600,000 that will cover the projects that have longer phases, longer life, which is the Phase 1 of Main Street Reconstruction that was approved for the RDG and SEH contracts. The Lake Street Reconstruction, the city's share, not the water utility, so it's $160,000. The library, city hall parking lot, this is the design and engineering, of $105,000. The Rotary Riverview Park Plan for $80,000. And the tractor backhoe replacement for $85,000. And the LED street light upgrade for $20,000. So those are the $600,000 for the projects that have been previously approved by council, and I need to have the money back into the fund.
Okay. So again, we need to approve making payment, or to get a loan from the State Trust Fund to cover these expenditures that we've pretty much paid for already. We need a motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Hagan, that we approve of resolution number 1395. This is authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed $600,000 from the State Trust Fund loan for finance of street and public works projects. And this is on a five-year note, you said?
Five-year note, 3%.
Okay. Five-year note, 3%. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Kathy, thank you. Next, we have license report number 1390. This is just a change of agent for the Wapaka Hospitality Corporation, which is the ale house, as we all understand. They are just changing agents. The ownership is, is still the same. So we would need approval to allow them to change their agent.
Still moved.
Motion by Whitman, second by Hackett, that we approve of the license report number 1390. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, we have license report number 1391. We call it operator's license, but these are bartender's license that we approve. We would need motion to approve this. Of course, it's always pending background checks, and if they owe any fines, they would not get their license until those are paid.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Hackett, that we approve of the license report number 1391. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, we have communications recommendations of the mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring up, and then we'll get out of here. Number one, I want to thank the department heads, and I have thanked Kathy a couple times already on the budget process, but I really want to thank the department heads for a great job in, in making this run smoothly, and of course, putting the taxpayers first, and making sure that we have a balanced budget that, that works with very little impact to the, to our mill rate. So appreciate that very much, and give yourself a little pat on the back, but we do appreciate that a lot. I also, Henry and Aaron both brought this up, but I just wanted to touch on this, just so you know, as staff and as your employees, that I, the mayor's office is especially aware of this, and I know a number of council people I've talked to about this too, that the implementing that performance review process, I think, is a wonderful thing. I think, you know, being able to have some kind of process where you can review how your employees are doing, as well as your department heads, is something that's important, and maybe has been lacking in the past. So I appreciate that you guys did your own initiative here, and this was not, nothing that we really pushed for you to implement, but we appreciate that you're going through this process. And I think it will make our city staff and employees that much better because of that. And then last of all, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight, and have a wonderful holiday season, Thanksgiving. And we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, December 15th, 2017, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at 7:06 PM. Again, thanks, everybody, for attending.